Welcome everybody to the 165th meeting of the Internet Society Board of Trustees. We'll start with the question of whether there are any declarations of conflict. For today's meeting. Seeing none, I will note that we did receive a regret from Paul Ebersman, who was unable to join us today because of personal travel. We have also since the last meeting received the resignation of my Muna Diop. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of the previous board meeting proposed resolution being resolved at the minutes of the 164th meeting of the ISAC Board of Trustees held by video conference on the 11th of May 2022 are approved. May I ask if there's any discussion of this resolution? Okay, may I ask for someone to move the resolution? I see Laura and Brian. All those in favor, please raise your hand in the tool or on the video. Is there anybody who needs to abstain? Mohamed, I see your hand is up. I believe that was from before to approve. Is that correct? Okay, is there anybody who is in nay?
Yes, that was a hand for approval.
Thank you, Mohamed. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the resolution is approved. The next item of business is to accept the independent auditors' report. Richard, as the Chair of the Audit Committee, would you please go through that for us, please?
Thank you. The Audit Committee met with our auditors earlier this week and last week to review the their report on the financials of ISOC. On the overall statement is that our finances are in good shape. The major finding of the auditors was there was there were some inconsistencies in specific accounting treatments among ISOC and the PIR and ITF on a few matters. So that was flagged as something for follow-up of the finance staff and the Audit Committee for for the coming year. Because of some of these, working out these inconsistencies, we don't have the completely final report yet, but we expect that only to differ in one minor detail. So I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and vote based on the report we've been provided. So I'd like to move that we accept the auditor's report.
Is there a second? Pepper? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand on video or in the tool. Any abstain? Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution to accept the 2021 Independent Auditors' Report is accepted as presented. So Richard, the next is to receive the final report of the ISOC Audit Committee. Do you want to walk us through the report?
Sure. As far as working for committee, there's not a whole bunch to report. We did our usual duties in terms of reviewing conflict of interest, 990, the financial reports. Actually, the major thing I wanted to call out here is toward the end. At the kind of the top and the bottom here, that we had a bunch of churn in the Audit Committee this year and due to actually two of our members, two of our four members at the beginning of the year resigning at the end of the year, leaving only Luis and I left on the committee at the end of the year. And that's it's really unfortunate situation because this is an important committee for the oversight of ISOC's finances. And because it's so financially oriented, it requires some detailed technical knowledge of accounting principles and things like that. So I've noted three recommendations here at the bottom to try and kind of rectify some of this. One is to try and ensure more stability in this committee, both by kind of making it a bigger committee to start with and encouraging the members to serve for more than one board year. And the other recommendation here is to arrange some training for the Audit Committee to make sure that all of the Audit Committee members have the requisite skills to and kind of background knowledge to exercise robust oversight over these processes. The good news is we've had a very productive relationship with BDO and this their first year as our auditors and they've offered to help us in this training. So I think we've got good possibilities there. And then Luis is graciously agreed to chair the Audit Committee next year. And in the interest of continuity, he's been involved in a lot of the chair discussions this year so far. So that's the report of the Audit Committee. I think that was reflected in the discussion we had earlier of committee selections for next year. So hopefully that will one get implemented and improve our financial oversight in years to come.
So one quick follow-up question on that, Richard, and that is, had we actually added to the committee when the first resignation occurred, would that have been disruptive to the committee or would that have been a good idea?
No, I think adding back to it would be a good idea. As a general practice. Because there's basically two moments where this committee has a lot of work to do. One is in the fall when we reviewed the 990 and one is in the spring when we reviewed the financial statement audit. So making sure that we have good staffing at those moments in the committee's life is is the important thing. And like I said, the more we can have continuity, the better. But you know, having good eyes on all this is also important.
I thank you for the report. Any any questions? Okay, may I ask someone to move the acceptance of the Audit Committee report? Richard moves and Luis seconds. Which, since they're the two members who've managed to make it through the year, certainly makes sense. All those in favor of accepting the report as presented, please raise your hand either in the tool or on the video. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, I believe the Audit Committee report is thus accepted as presented. The next is the CEO Succession Planning Committee report and Dr. Haberman, if you would take over from here.
Formality Ted, the formality. So two quick things for the CEO Succession Committee. We we continue working on the skill list that was developed by last year's committee. And you know, we accepted came to the conclusion that given the number of requested or required capabilities, it's really not something that we saw being able to be filled by one person. And and so we started thinking about the role of of CEO is actually being two specific responsibilities. One, the the technical visionary leadership that would be more of an out facing capability. And one that would be more of an administrative or inward facing capability and started breaking skills up into categories. So the 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 goal here is to start thinking about what are the what's the emphasis that the you know, that we would want to put into into that role and asking the the board and next year's committee to start thinking about, do we need to actually think about it as two separate positions? Or do we want to scale this list down and really focus on keeping one single position? The the second part of the report is focused on the actual succession list and the internal candidates that would be capable of taking on the CEO role if something were to happen to to Andrew. We we reviewed the list that Andrew had developed and the skills development suggestions that he had made. And the committee put together some information and suggestions for additional skill development for those internal candidates with with the the goal of helping assist in the having a good bench of of people capable of taking on the CEO role if something should happen to Andrew. Very, you know, very good exchanges between the committee members, lots of good discussions about, you know, what we would see going forward. The key thing here is is asking the board to start thinking about how we view the role and what is that we want to think about as two roles or one. With that, I think the report is ready for for approval.
I think you. Are there any questions, Brian? And may I ask someone move the resolution, please? I saw Laura and Mohamed. So all in favor, please raise your hand either in the video or in the tool. Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstain? Seeing none, this is also accepted. Professor Martinez, would you walk us through the Elections Committee report as its remaining chair?
Yes, the remains of the Elections Committee. Well, the in the committee, in the report, there is a narrative about the the process. And this process happened without any major incident, not even a problem regarding the 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 election. As you have noticed, well, my Muna Diop resigned. So then the I finished this report. And the as a result of the elections process, we have new members in the board. Yeah, actually, we welcome them very warmly. And as recommendations, if you go to the bottom of the of the we have two recommendations. One is that the annual work plan that we have been carrying out to continue in the same way, because there is no problem. And obviously, the committee is open to any recommendation of the board or the or the members of the Board of Trustees. And also the regarding our work related to diversity, we may take these points into account for future processes related to elections. And we appreciate a lot the 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 work of the staff in this process to make it seamless. And with all the technological aids, and of course, we appreciate a lot the help and aid from Kevin, who really made this process happen in that way seamless. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Luis? May I ask someone to move the motion? Luis and Brian seconds. All in favor, please. Raise your hand, are there in the tool? Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, seeing none, this is approved. The next is the Executive Committee report. This is indeed quite short. So Kevin, if you would put it up. Essentially, all it says is the Executive Committee never found it necessary to meet during the course of the year. It is set to meet only in the occasions when it is impossible or impractical for the full board to to meet or to take an electronic code. And neither condition having occurred during, of course, the past year, the Executive Committee never met. Are there any questions about that? Is there somebody willing to move the acceptance of that report? I saw Richard and Laura. All in paper, please raise, signify by raising your hand in the tool or in the video. Okay, thank you for flashing up Kevin, but I kind of lost track. Are there any any opposed to to the acceptance of this report? Mohamed, your hand is up. Are you opposed or is this from your previous acceptance of the report?
No, I'm not opposed. I'm lowering down.
Thank you. Are there any hopes, Dan? Hearing none will accept this committee report as well. The next is the Finance Committee report. Laura, would you take us through that, please?
We didn't have any agenda because I did not prepare in advance as numerical.
That's correct. I'm sorry. This will be brought to the to to the trustees by e-vote later this week. Thank you.
If anyone that joined late, my deepest apologies. I misread the calendar and thought it was due this Friday and that we were discussing at the AGM. So total mistake on my part. I will circulate it today.
No worries. In fact, we will be doing the same bringing by e-vote for the Governance Committee report because Paul has sent regrets for day because the person is right.
Thank you.
George, the nominations committee report is next up.
Yep, thank you. Well, the purpose of the nominations committee, as you know, is to submit two slates, one for chapters and one for organization members to be voted on and to be processed, the votes to be processed by the Elections Committee. And that report you've already heard. It's one of the few committees which have non-board members on it. In fact, in this this year, a minority of board members and a majority of non-board members. And the purpose of the non-board members we interpret is to widen our network of potential candidates so that we can make not only make available the information about the nomination, the election process to the more members, but also recruit specific candidates from those who we know. So we do, we we essentially leverage those additional networks. And it worked quite well. This year, we have, we got a fairly good selection of candidates. Not as many as we would have liked, but we were able to put together good slates for both both elections. The and we submitted them and there were no petition candidates and therefore our work was done. The one recommendation we'd make is to start earlier. We got a late start this year. In part because of selecting the nominating committee and non-board members. But we encourage starting the process as rapidly as possible so that you have maximum time this year to both solicit candidates and to discuss them and in the committee to to form the slates that are really advantageous for increasing the board's skills and diversity. Thanks to Kevin for all his help. The staff work is important in this case. And and he delivered very, very well indeed. Thanks. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Are there questions for George? Seeing none, I may ask somebody to move the acceptance. Brian and Luis, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand in the tool or on video. Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstention? Seeing none, this is approved. The next item of business is the action items for the 2022-2023 Board of Trustees. This purpose is to convey some thoughts from this board to the next board. And the resolution itself is accept and convey action items to the 2023 Board of Trustees result. The 2021-2022 Board of Trustees accepts as accurate the following summary of agreed board action items and further resolve that the board conveys the summary to the 2022-2023 Board for consideration. And the three things that are on it continue to support the projects and activities approved as part of the Internet Society's 2022 action plan. Consider implementations of policies and procedures to increase board diversity and improve structures of consultation along the lines of those suggested in the recent open forums on governance reform. And support the evolution of the relationship of the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation as a supporting organization. Is there discussion? Okay, may I ask somebody to move the motion? Pepper and Richard. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand in the tool or on the video. Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, the next item of business is the dates and locations for the 2023 board meetings and retreat. For this, we invite the incoming board members to comment as well. And the purpose here is to consider the options for the 2023 board meetings and retreat. There's no resolution for this as this will be set later. So I guess the thank you. Excellent. So the co-location, as people know, has commonly in the past been with IETF or ICANN. That reduces the trouble demand. It does mean that those particular weeks tend to be quite long for those board members who are heavily involved in either ICANN or IETF. Next slide, please. We have been up until the past few years where our geographic rotation has been entirely virtual. And therefore more a matter of time zones than anything else. The it has been something that historically the the board has considered. Given that it is largely a matter of time zone, since most people who attend the meetings do so virtually. I I will point out that the availability of the YouTube channel for later review of it also means that to some degree this is more a sense of whether the geographic rotation also gives you the opportunity to meet with with groups outside the board that might otherwise not be people with whom we could consult. And in in a related note, some have considered the asset board co-locating one of the regular annual meetings with the IGF. The IGF meetings do tend to vary a good bit over the years. And they're sometimes a bit late for the meeting and countering purposes. Is there one more? I think so. Yes. Next slide. Right. So the annual board retreat is generally held as a standalone meeting so that the trustees can focus on strategy or big picture issues without the distraction of the co-located events. And September has historically been when that has been held. That might be actually a bit late this year since we're seeding the new trustees a bit earlier than normal. This particular ICANN is is early in in the year compared to to many ones, sometimes July or late August. And so September is actually a number of months post seeding. So we could consider bringing that in. Although I will tell you that trying to bring it into August begins to run into a lot of difficulties with schedule. Next slide. So here are some of the options in front of us. Are there thoughts people wish to share at this time?
Is there any location most likely for the retreat?
It's it's certainly up to the board to decide that. So if there was a reason for the board to pick a place to do it. Historically, I think doing it at ISOC headquarters has proven to to have some advantages because if there are going to be consultations with staff, the staff are largely concentrated there. But as you know, the staff are also quite geographically dispersed in some instances. So it's not necessarily the case that any particular staff member will be based there. It's just that it's the largest cluster.
Yes, also I see a lot of America rather than just one Europe. So maybe as someone suggested for this year, maybe think of Asia or Africa. But it's just a collection problem.
Yeah, this so this is something that we've discussed in terms of the purpose of the the board meetings in terms of being able to have participation, local participation. And that's also an advantage of co-locating with either, you know, ICANN or IETF. The retreat is a different matter. You know, one of the things now having the list that we may want to do is give us some thought. We're going to be together in 10 days. And I'm just, I mean, how urgent is it? That to to make a decision now or have discussion now and continue to and then make some decisions when we're together for the AGM?
We can certainly make the decisions at the AGM. As you'll notice, there's no resolution required for this.
Right, yeah.
I see Andrew and Barry in queue. Andrew?
Yeah, thanks. The the only remark that I would make is that the June date for the AGM listed here is pretty early. And that there there are some logistic issues that make an AGM that early. You know, a little bit tricky. And I will point out that we will not have all of the excellent guidance next year that we have historically had in running board logistics. So that may be something that we want to we want to take into consideration and maybe give ourselves a little more time in the for the AGM date.
I assume you're referring to the co-location with ICANN versus San Francisco, which is the last two days, three days of July.
Right.
Barry?
Thanks. In response to Luis, the April IETF meeting is almost certainly going to be in Asia. So we would likely be doing that in Asia if we co-locate there. Which adds a bit to the geographic thing. And responding to Andrew, San Francisco probably makes sense if we're going to do the retreat in Northern Virginia than having two things in the Washington DC area, you know, so.
Okay, so
Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, Pepper.
No, I was just going to say that that's actually good news, Barry, because again with the when is the IETF going to make that decision? Will we have any more signal?
They're working on contracts and we will know when they officially announce it. But due to the cycling, they're really trying to have that win in Asia.
Right. That's really good news. And that actually helps on the geographic distribution.
Okay, so again, there's no resolution required for today and we'll take this up again, but it's good for folks to have had a chance to to start to consider this and look at your own schedule. In particular, if you could start looking at your schedule, what we did last year and which I suggest we do again this year is establish quite firmly the dates. So last year, we nailed the dates down in stone. And we said, maybe we'll meet in person, maybe it will be virtual, that will be up to the pandemic and other matters arising. But we know that these are the dates and that gave everybody the chance to to really block off that time on their schedule as as firmly as possible where if we say, well, it might be here or it might be there until later in the year. That's that's problematic because people's schedules start to fill up and then we we run into situations where we can't bring everybody together. So I think we we will always understand that the matters arising may cause us to either meet entirely virtually or shift where the location is. But that if we can get the gate, the dates themselves picked, those would be probably the 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 top top line item. Okay, there's one item of AOB, which I'm aware. Are there any other items before I ask Kevin to bring that resolution up? Hearing none, Kevin, would you bring up the resolution? As noted earlier, my Muna Diop was was recently promoted in such a way that she is no longer has was was recently promoted in such a way that she is no longer has the capacity to also serve as a trustee. And as a result, the trustees have discussed and would like to appoint Mohammed Shabir to the balance of her term. The resolution for that is appoint Mohammed Shabir to the ISOP Board of Trustees. Whereas my Muna Diop has recently resigned from the Board of Trustees of the Internet Society with one year remaining on her term. And whereas the board has the power to appoint an interim trustee pursuant to Article Two, Section Three of the amended and restated bylaws of the Internet Society. And whereas the board desires to exercise this power to retain an appropriate breadth of experience. And whereas Mohammed Shabir distinguished himself as a member of the 2021 2022 board, it resolved that the board appoints Mohammed Shabir to the ISOP Board of Trustees for a term of one year effective at the start of the 2022 Annual General Meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand in the tool or on video. Any opposed? Any abstain? Mohammed, I didn't see you raise a hand for any of these. I assume that's an abstent an abstention on your part.
Yes, thanks. This was an abstention because this makes me an interested party.
Yeah, I would think a recusal.
That's we. We only have abstain as one of the the choices. So
Thank you.
Okay, well, let me thank you very much, Mohammed, for agreeing to serve an additional year. I look forward to continuing to working with you and the next board. That brings us go ahead, mom.
Yes, I thank the board for placing the trust in me and I'll I'll look forward to working with the board and serving another year and serving the Internet Society, making it and the internet for everyone. So thanks once again.
Thank you. This brings us to the end of the ISOP Board of Trustees meeting. The members will reconvene as the foundation work in in a few moments. Thank you very much, everybody.
And we'll stay in this 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 Zoom link. I'm just going to take a moment to end the recording, start a new one and bring up the the materials we'll use in that meeting.